Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, March 11th, 2025 study session of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with Councilmember Cooper excused and Councilmember Gilman should be joining us shortly. So with that, we will move on to our first agenda item for this evening. Item 2A on our agenda is Olympia's Commute Trip Reduction Plan update. And presenting this evening is Michelle Swanson, City Senior Planner, excuse me, for Public Works and Transportation. Good evening, Michelle.
Thank you very much for the introduction, Mayor Payne. I am delighted to be introducing this item tonight. This briefing is an opportunity for all of you to discuss the updates to the Commute Trip Reduction Plan before you consider it for approval on April 8th. Olympia has supported commute trip reduction since the Commute Trip Reduction Law was enacted in 1991. The intent of the law is to reduce traffic congestion at peak times by managing what we call demand for space on our streets. This is often called travel demand management. A vehicle that is occupied by one person is the least efficient use of space on a street relative to other ways of getting around, such as riding the bus, sharing the ride, riding a bike, walking, rolling, or not making the trip at all. Olympia has supported those other ways of getting around or not getting around in many ways for decades. As a city, Olympia serves two roles in commute trip reduction. One is as a jurisdiction that has employers that are affected by the commute trip reduction law within our jurisdiction. We are responsible for ensuring that those employers are doing their part to reduce commute trips. And the Thurston Regional Planning Council, TRPC, does that work on the city's behalf. Thank you, by the way, TRPC. And the second is as an employer ourselves. The city is downtown's largest employer. Our longstanding support for telework, flexible work schedules, for walking, for biking, for riding the bus to work is significant for downtown, as was the decision to build City Hall with very limited employee parking provided. Now, I said that Olympia has long supported commute trip reduction, and I mean that. When the Fourth Avenue Bridge was rebuilt after the Niskwali earthquake in 2001, a lot of thought and discussion went into ensuring that it was built with the fewest lanes necessary to ensure that we did not create more traffic by overbuilding it. Also, in the early 2000s, we expanded where we have metered parking downtown specifically to support commute trip reduction, because managing parking supply is one of the most effective tools that we have for reducing traffic congestion. And there is a lot of work that we can still do on this front. Honestly, every step we take in this realm is challenging, because we are challenging well-accepted norms. We've made a lot of progress and we have more work to do. A few more recent examples of the ways in which the city supports commute trip reduction and more efficient use of space on our streets include building infrastructure for pedestrians and bicyclists. In 2023, the city council voted to increase the sales tax to fund improvements for them, and that is now the city's largest source of funding for transportation capital projects. The city supports intercity transit in many ways, including partnering on transit signal prioritization along Martin Way, which has been a multi-jurisdictional effort with Lacey and Thurston County. It has also been a multi-year effort. The city has implemented many policies to increase land use density, especially near transit, which makes it easier for the transit agency to offer service where lots of people live. And the Capital Mall Triangle Planned Action and Subarea Plan is designed to carry that policy even further once the planned action ordinance is passed. Making it easier for people to get around without having to drive meets many of the city's broader policy goals. For example, owning a vehicle is costly and not everyone is able to drive, so it makes Olympia more equitable when it's easier to get around without a vehicle. And to meet the goal of becoming a net zero emission city by 2040, we will need to dramatically reduce our vehicle miles traveled. In a tightly knit region like ours, it is so important to have a lead agency to coordinate among the jurisdictions to ensure that we are not undermining each other with contradictory policies, and that is one reason why TRPC's role is so important in this work. So with that in mind, I am very happy to hand this off to our partners at TRPC. They are going to tell you about the update to our commute trip reduction plan. I will let them introduce themselves to all of you, so thank you.
Excellent. Thanks so much, Michelle. And as she mentioned, the city is not just a jurisdictional implementer, they are also an employer as part of the commute trip production program, and I can't help but say they're an excellent employer for commute trip production and do a great job of participating in promotions and walking, absolutely walking the talk with their infrastructure in this facility, but also just everything they do as part of downtown. So I just want to make sure everyone knows that you guys are doing a great job at that. So my name's Veronica Jarvis. I work with Thurston Regional Planning Council, and I'll let my colleague introduce himself as well.
Hello, everyone. I'm George Castillo, Assistant Planner.
Yeah, and so we do have a presentation here for you today, and it is a little bit the basics and then learning more about what, why we're talking about a commute trip production plan right now. But then we'd love to, at the end, just leave some time and answer questions if you have any, so we will go ahead.
All right, everybody. Let me give you a quick rundown on the CTR program. So it was enacted in 1991 as part of the Clean Air Act to reduce traffic congestion, air pollution, and fuel consumption. It requires large employers, 100-plus more employees, so think Amazon, Boeing, Microsoft, to develop strategies to promote sustainable commuting. This also applies to state agencies in Thurston County. As part of the program, ETCs have to create a CTR program report every two years. This will affect work sites with designated urban areas to encourage carpooling, transit, biking, walking, and telework. Olympia has its own ordinance in regards to CTR. As you'll see, Lacey and Tomwater also have similar ordinances. Employers with 100 full-time employees between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM must develop a CTR program. The ordinance outlines specific requirements for employers, including the appointment of employee transportation coordinators. Here are the CTR survey results for Olympia. As you can see, we have 58% of people who work from home, another 35% who drive alone, and 7% others, so think biking, walking, telework, et cetera. Every, every work site has to have an ETC coordinator, so Employee Transportation Coordinator. They serve as a primary contact to the CTR program, and they promote sustainable commuting options, and also they ensure employers meet reporting requirements for the CTR program. Through TRPC, there's, ETCs can receive training, resources from local jurisdictions, and access to CTR support tools and data analysis. So any ETC that needs any help, TRPC will be happy to do it. Me and Veronica will take point on that.
So I'm going to take over here, but I'm actually, I'm going to go back, because I think this is an interesting slide that might, might cause some discussion, is the CTR survey results. If you look at it now, you know, that dark green line is the work from home, and if you would have looked at that five years ago, obviously, things would have been very flipped. You know, prior to this, our biggest mode split was probably drive alone. Well, it was definitely drive alone, but you had that very light green over there would have been like your people that are carpooling and taking transit and things like that. So I do just want to call out how big of a shift we've seen in the past five years. And we did switch surveying methods, so the results aren't directly comparable, which is why we didn't provide you that. But obviously, I don't need to tell anyone that things have changed quite a bit, but specifically in a place like Olympia, who hosts more state agencies, I think, than any other city in this, in the state. And as George mentioned, we, the CTR program generally across the state affects employers with over 100 employees, but especially in Thurston County only, it affects all state agencies. So we have a lot of small work sites who are part of our program. If you have the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation and you have 29 employees, you are part of the program in Thurston County. If you're a commission with, a state commission with three employees, you're part of the program. So just to give you a little idea of how our program is different from other regions, we have a lot of small and medium-sized employers and some very large employers. And as Michelle mentioned, you know, for each region, there's usually, outside of state agencies, you guys are one of the largest in Olympia. I'm sorry.
Veronica?
Yeah.
Are you taking questions now, or do you prefer to wait?
Sure.
Okay. Councilmember Vanderpoel.
Yeah.
This is partially a question for you, but also for Michelle.
Yeah.
Some of the survey data, I'm, I'm wondering, and I'm pretty sure, but I want to, I want to, wondering if how much of the survey data that helps us kind of inform any of our planning, especially our transportation chapter, if, if you want to elaborate on potentially any of that, because I'm always curious about why are the reasons why someone doesn't, you know, take the bus, walk, ride a bike, what, you know, if any of that survey kind of gives us the reason why, what, or what would change that habit? What was the reason why they would want to make that change if they're not currently doing it?
Absolutely. One of the questions on the survey is, you know, if you don't take any of these modes, why not? You know, what's your barrier? And, and for, and that happened, and so you can get that rolled up by each work site, and so you're able to see for each area, and this goes to show how, how unique each, each location is. Let's say you're at the hospital, Providence St. Peter Hospital. A lot of those employees work hours that start really early and they end late, and sometimes the, the bus schedule doesn't work for them, or they don't want to commute to work by bike in the dark. I learned that last week at an event, got there at shift start time, and it was completely dark the whole way. So sometimes those barriers are so site-specific, so it's hard to generalize for the, for a city, let alone a region. It really is by work site often. But we do have that rolled up data that you can dive into and start to look at reasons why. And I think Michelle can back me up with anything else, but I think we've made it so easy to drive is our biggest problem.
Yeah, Veronica really speaks truth to that. And I think I've always been a little cautious about the survey data, the CTR survey data, because it is a really specialized sample. Generally speaking, in our region, people who work for the state tend to be more economically privileged than other people in our region, so, oh, thank you. So I'm mindful of that. And there are also a self-selected group within a self-selected group, well, not a self-selected group within a self-selected group, but a self-selected group within a group, within a privileged group. So there's that as well, and I've also found it a little difficult to work with in the past, to just get data in, that's compiled in like one spreadsheet. Even that's challenging. I have to, you know, make a, yeah, make a, make a request from just the right person and, and so the payoff has not been very high. But the survey has changed, things have changed, and it's, you know, it's not a bad idea to look at that again and to, to think about that, so thank you for the prompt.
Yeah, because it, to me, it's like if you kept seeing over and over again that, for example, you're saying people are trying to get to work, but it's dark out during the winter, right?
Yep.
Does that mean we should put investment into our trails to have lights in certain areas, right? So I, I think of the physical investment of overlap, right? But to your point, some of it is people of a certain economic class, people of a certain thing. We also want to make sure that we're, we're getting folks that are service workers instead of just state employees, right? So, thank you.
Yep, absolutely. And another, as part of our commute trip production plan, which I'll talk about in just a second, we did a lot of outreach to the people surrounding those very active commute trip production sites, those big employers. And we asked them, you know, what's the most important thing to you when traveling around this area? And, and again, unsurprisingly, safety. I mean, people didn't either feel safe biking or walking or, you know, using transit after dark, things like that. And, and it's, those are the kind of themes we hear that a lot of us already do know. But those are, those are great things to think about and something we work with our employers on of, you know, what, what things could you do to take steps towards getting your, getting your employees to find those pathways to different commute modes?
One, one quick follow-up, if that's okay?
Yeah.
So I know that Inter-City Transit is also looking at its new routes.
Yeah.
Is any of this going to go into that maybe perhaps, or is it, or is that kind of gone a long ways before?
I feel like you're doing such a good job of just doing my presentation for me. No, no, that's so true, though. One of the next slides I'm going to talk about is integration with other plans.
Okay.
And that's, we work hand-in-hand with Inter-City Transit all the time. They're an awesome partner with us.
Thank you.
Yeah, was there something else? Yeah.
Mayor Protemwen.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks. So you were talking about safety being a concern of folks. I'd love to hear more about that. There's different things that make, you know, are they, are folks fearful of, of getting into an accident? Are they fearful of another human causing them harm? If you could just talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, what we heard in the feedback survey for the Commute Trip Productions Local Plan was mostly safety related to active transportation use. So safety biking, finding those routes that feel safe to all people is challenging. I'm a big biker. I will bike in the middle of a lane. A lot of people won't, and that's fair. You know, you have to feel really comfortable and know the rules of the road, but making, finding those facilities that feel safe for everyone is really challenging, and I know the city's making a lot of investments. The road, just the Fifth Avenue, what's the one coming down the hill? Right, that you, you guys did a great job with the bike lanes. Thank you. Those kind of facilities are more often what people feel comfortable on, is those separated, very well-marked, lit facilities that don't have conflicts with other vehicles of any kind. So most of the comments we got were related to active transportation safety.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll get back to this, is that the reason we're here and talking to you today, we're always happy to talk to you about the CTR program anytime you want, but we're especially here right now because we are doing an update to the commute trip production local plans. And these are something that are required by RCW. City of Olympia had a past commute trip production local plan, and the last time that one was updated was like 15 years ago, and we had gotten extensions from the state, and then they were planning to do a very robust update right before their pandemic, and they said, whoa. And so that is why we're doing an update now. And so we're doing these documents for each of the jurisdictions, and this happens to fall within the same time as the comprehensive planning schedule with most of the jurisdictions, which is really useful, because one of the things, the commute trip production local plans, one of their goals is to make sure that you're integrating commute trip production into your other planning documents and making that part of how your city thinks. And Michelle just gave us a great beginning of this, you guys are absolutely doing it. You're thinking about those kind of active transportation modes before you plan any projects. Your transportation master plan has, is, you know, really well focused on those sort of things also. So that's one of the goals of creating these commute trip production local plans, is to integrate with other local plans, and y'all are absolutely doing it. Another one we coordinate with is the local transit agencies, so Inter-City Transit, and then also our surrounding transit agencies. I think that's something that people do forget about, is that we have great service in just our whole region and great fare free service from Gray's Harbor, Mason, Rural Transit, Lewis County Transit, and those are people we also do coordinate with to make sure that the commuters coming into our community have great service as well, great connections, making sure those timings work for people that are commuting to work sites. With the pandemic, we saw less usage of some of those, but at the same time, a lot of that is coming back, and they're doing their best to work cohesively as a region, which is really exciting, I think. So as, as Michelle mentioned, we do administer the program for the region. So for Thurston County, if you have commute trip production work sites in your county, you are affected by the law. So Thurston County, in their unincorporated area, has a few CTR sites, Evergreen and some of their county buildings. So they have, they have a plan, and then Olympia, Lacey, and Tomwater all have plans, mostly because of their state agencies that they have in their area. So as Michelle set up a few of them, but another thing that is a goal of the commute trip production local plans is, are the projects you're doing in the area going to benefit commuters and going to benefit them in ways that they could choose those other modes if they had the opportunity to? And I did, I highlighted here a recent visit with Congresswoman Strickland and some City of Olympia staff and elected officials that we did to talk about some federal funding that was received for, for the Fones Road Corridor, which is going to make that a really nice multimodal corridor that is a great connection to our trail system and put some updated flashing beacons, those kind of things, and just make it a safer corridor for a lot of, a lot of uses. So I think that's really exciting. And listed here, I don't need to go through them all. I think Michelle could tell you better than me at every step of the way, but the things you've done to, you know, make a low-stress bike corridor throughout your city, a lot of sidewalk improvements, and just even when you do things like make a roundabout to slow down cars that will make people on bikes inherently safer too. So even road projects can be things that help other active transportation users. So I always try and remember that when I think about, you know, even if we're building roads, sometimes it can be beneficial for all transportation users. So a lot of really exciting projects on here, and I think you all are absolutely incorporating commute trip production and active transportation modes into your city planning and transportation projects. So again, as I mentioned, the things that we, we strive to do is incorporate into other plans. So your comprehensive plan, you know, working really closely with, with city staff to really share a lot of information and share the outreach we've done. Mayor Protem, I think you, you were curious about some of the outreach we did, and, you know, the minute we finished that, we said, hey, Olympia, here was what we heard in your jurisdiction, and here is what people want. And I think that that's really useful feedback, because, you know, that's a great way for us to partner and use less resources to hear from the community, bother the community less about what they want. So really great partnership on that front. And then with the Inter-City Transit Strategic Plan, the Inter-City Transit system runs also the local van pool system, and something that's exciting that came last year in the state legislative budget is free van pool for state employees. And so they pay nothing, they get a subsidy from the state to pay their van pool, so every state employee gets that benefit. And for us locally, that was super exciting, because that's like saying to any state employee, you could travel for free, you know, if you don't have to take, take your car. And I, I just thought that was like, we were one of the first, you know, states in the nation to try something like that on that kind of a scale, and it's been a really exciting, exciting reception by state employees that have taken that up. So I, Inter-City Transit has been really helpful with, on doing outreach with us on that at each different state agency in the region. The City of Olympia Transportation Master Plan, you know, that commuter production has been incorporated into that, and also just great list of projects that are beneficial to commuters and all active transportation users. And then Thurston Regional Planning Council is just, I think, tonight is the first presentation of that draft too, at another one of the city councils. So incorporating all these things into other plans is really one of the goals of the local plan, so that's, we're doing it. I just wanted to really share what the goal is and that we're absolutely making strides to do it. And I think with that, we're happy to take any questions or have conversation or just hear more about your thoughts.
Thank you, Veronica. Any questions or comments from council? Do you have more? Councilmember Vanderpoel.
So I'm looking forward to seeing more of this. I'm looking forward to seeing how that'll affect other projects that weren't listed. So like Capital Way is a little bit in the future, but I'm hoping that will help a little bit, considering that is a corridor that's, that if you're going from Olympia to Tomwater offices, if we can fill in a little bit of that, that will help a lot. If you want to, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that, but that, I think, there's these, there's these main roads, right? These main arterials in our community that often are the hardest to serve, because those are the highest demand for car traffic.
Yep.
Right? So I'm, I'm curious to see how much of this future planning will help make an argument for that, because sometimes in the past, it's been hard to convince that investment, right?
Yep, and Michelle and I are looking at each other, because it's like I planted you over there. I, I ask all the time, like, you know, let's look at these main corridors that serve commuters and see if there's things we can do. And, and a lot of times, you know, that, the project on Capital Way to do some sort of protected bike lane is, my understanding, at some point in your transportation master plan, but it, it does often help when there's, you know, community advocates who are talking about, yes, this would help me commute in an active way, and I'm one of those community advocates, so I swear I didn't pay them.
Would you like to show your microphone? More to come on Capital Way very soon. We are working hard to reconfigure Capital Way with the paving project that is coming in the near term, and we're working on design and we're working with the neighborhood to see what we can do. And it will certainly include adding bike lanes between the section that is between Union and the southern city limits, which are a car line. How those bike lanes will be configured are things that we're trying to work out in design right now.
Cool. Looking forward to it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? I have one about, so obviously, the purpose of this is for carbon emission reduction. So how does that, how does this factor in, this particular update factor into data for the county's greenhouse gas emissions?
Yeah, climate, yeah.
Climate mitigation plan.
Climate mitigation plan.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great question. So as part of the climate mitigation plan, some of the strategies that, you know, I, just a recap for folks that are less familiar, you know, buildings and transportation are our biggest emitters in the area. And transportation, one of the key strategies is to really reduce single occupancy vehicle use, and Michelle stated that really well. The more of that we can do, the more our targets get met. And so we use the CTR survey results, and as Michelle mentioned, there are absolutely flaws. We are, they're not everyone in the community, they're a sampling of them. But things like telework have helped our region so much. Things like the free van pool for state employees are making a dent, those kind of things, and we measure them by the survey, because it is some of the better data we have. The modelers at TRPC also do great work of looking at how many more, more or less folks are coming on the highways and through our local streets to try and get at that number of how many more or less cars are coming to our communities. But I think getting those survey results and looking at how they compare to years past do help us look at if we're making that mark on the climate mitigation plan. So, yeah, great question, because it is one of the goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. That's one of the goals. Congestion and greenhouse gas emissions are the two goals.
Yeah, thank you. And the fact that this covers so much of our region, right? I would think that there was some crossover there, but thanks for confirming. Any additional questions? Councilmember Green.
Veronica, as you were talking there, it sparked a question for me. So greenhouse gas emissions being a big piece of this, is there any calculation or any incorporation in CTR's conversations around electric and hybrid vehicles? Like, does it make a difference if, you know, half of your employees are commuting, but half of those are not using gas-powered vehicles?
Yeah, they, and this was one of the updates to the survey. They do now ask if you're commuting in an EV, but then they still want to know if you're carpooling, if you're commuting, because the goals of the program aren't just one or the other, it's both. It's greenhouse gas emission reduction and congestion, because until everybody has an EV, you're still stopping up all those other people that have ICE vehicles in congestion. So, great, yeah, great question, though.
It's a great question. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you for your time. This comes before council on April 8th, and after- This comes before council on April 8th, and after that, I believe the TRPC board will then take it up upon approval from council.
Yep, exactly. Yeah. Thank you guys so much for your time. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Good night. Okay. Before we move on to our next agenda item, I did just want to mention that City Manager Bernie is joining us tonight as well. He is in DC at the National League of Cities Conference. So thank you, Jay, for being on tonight and sticking around to answer any questions we might have. And you are three hours ahead of us, so we appreciate you hanging in there. All right. Michelle, Veronica, and George, have a good night. All right. So we will move on to Agenda Item 2B, which is Home Energy Assessment and Disclosure Policy Update. And presenting this evening is Jaren Burke, Climate Program Specialist, and Dr. Pamela Braff, our Director of Climate Programs. Good evening, you two.
Good evening, Mayor Vane. It's my first appearance in front of the council, so I'm so happy to be with you all With that, I'll just go ahead and dive right in. My name is Jaren Burke, and I am the Climate Program Specialist. I'll be sharing some information with you all about the recommended regional home energy assessment and disclosure policy. Hopefully, it is easier to understand than to say that five times fast. I'm sure I'll say it plenty of times throughout this presentation. Throughout the presentation, I'll provide a brief background about how this policy fits into the City of Olympia's climate initiatives, which we were just discussing some of those, and give an overview of the Home Energy Score, which is the method that this policy is based around. After that, I'll share more information about the regional home energy assessment and disclosure policy itself, that's two times, before wrapping up with considerations for Olympia regarding this policy. With that, we'll go ahead and jump into the background. As a reminder, the City of Olympia has committed to reducing community-wide greenhouse gas emissions 59% below 2015 levels by 2030 and achieving net zero emissions by 2040. These targets were adopted through two initiatives, including the Olympia Climate Inheritance Resolution and the City's Race to Zero Campaign, which y'all are well aware of. But for folks that are less familiar with this terminology, net zero just refers to reducing emissions as much as possible and offsetting the rest. In other words, the city would not be adding to the amount of greenhouse gases in the atmosphere after 2040. This chart here shows the sources of emissions in the City of Olympia. We touched on the two, at least two of the big ones before, energy and transportation, but you can see that this is based on the city's 2021 community-wide greenhouse gas emissions inventory. You can see here that residential energy is the third-largest source of emissions and produces 22% of community-wide greenhouse gas emissions. It's worth noting that recent updates to the Washington State Building Code significantly increase energy performance requirements for new residential development. However, most homes in Thurston County were built before 1988, and more than two-thirds of the housing units that will exist in 2050 already exist today. And limited information on energy performance for a home is a barrier to addressing some of those emissions. Buildings are a major source of emissions beyond Olympia as well, including in other jurisdictions here in Thurston County. And because of that, the energy performance assessments were identified in the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan under two actions. For the sake of time, I won't read them, but I'll say here that the residential energy performance ratings and residential energy assessments were both called out specifically in the TCMP. And, yeah, I think that's it for that. Now we'll go ahead and, before we actually take a look at the policy itself, like I said before, I'll share some more context about the Home Energy Score, which is a scoring system developed by the U.S. Department of Energy. And just keep in mind that this is just one scoring system that exists for home energy assessments, but it's one of the most well-established and widely-used models, which is why it's specifically called out in this policy. So the Home Energy Score is a nationally standardized home energy rating tool that provides homeowners and buyers with comparable, incredible information about a home's energy use. DOE-trained Home Energy Score assessors can provide the Home Energy Score within an energy audit, a home inspection package, or as a standalone product. And a standalone assessment typically takes about an hour to complete and costs between $150 and $300 on average. You can see here in Figure 3 on the screen what factors in a home or the home assets are captured by the Home Energy Score, including number of stories, the age of the home, insulation and air sealing, and major equipment like the heating system and ducts. Think of these as the more permanent fixtures, permanent factors of a home that aren't easily swapped out, like, say, the lighting or appliances. The Home Energy Score also doesn't factor in individual behavior, which can vary drastically, as you can imagine, from one homeowner to another. You can see an example here on the screen of a Home Energy Score report, and it's specifically from the City of Portland, but these reports are customizable and can highlight different aspects of the Home Energy Score. But in a nutshell, it just shows a home's current rating, along with recommended improvements to increase the energy efficiency of that home. The score itself is on a scale from 1 to 10, with 10 representing a more efficient home or less energy usage. You can see here an example with, a home has an existing score of 3, but could achieve a score of 7 with the recommended improvements that are outlined in the report. The Home Energy Score also provides an estimate of how much savings a home might expect on their energy bill by making the recommended improvements. In this case, the home would receive a reduction in their energy bill of $882 each year. So the Home Energy Score is meant to provide benefits both to home buyers and to those selling their home. For those selling their home, a Home Energy Score can help show the value of the home's energy features and ensure that the listing reflects energy investments that have already been made in the home. And a Home Energy Score also allows the home buyers to know the energy use and the costs of a potential home and to make a more informed decision around their home-buying purchase. A Home Energy Score can also be used by appraisers and mortgage lenders for energy-related financing products and can allow home buyers to access an energy spark loan, which can help manage the costs of making necessary upgrades at the time of purchase with a lower interest rate. So you may have noticed that my background shifts here, and that's because we're talking about a regional initiative. And so you'll see some of the, the regional parts playing out here. I'm going to get into those a little bit more as we talk about the actual regional home energy assessment and disclosure policy. So this regional initiative is being moved forward by the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative, or TCMC. In June of 2023, the TCMC selected residential energy assessments as a regional initiative for further work in 2024. And note that the Land Use and Environment Committee actually received a briefing back in July 2023 on the Home Energy Score disclosure. And staff recommended at the time that the committee postponed consideration of a Home Energy Score policy specifically in Olympia to allow for a regional initiative to, to come forward and to be developed for consideration, which we presented to the Land Use Committee last month. The focus so far of this regional initiative has been to develop a model ordinance for disclosure of residential energy performance ratings in alignment with the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan and develop a program proposal and a budget for regional implementation of, of that plan. And the idea here is that all TCMC partners would be considering this proposed policy and budget and consider it for local adoption in order to move it forward as a region. This work hasn't happened in a vacuum. You can see here the timeline on the screen of what that work has looked like over the last year. I won't go into every detail, but you can see that the TCMC team had ongoing engagement with their executive committee and with the Community Advisory Work Group, or LACAH, and went through multiple drafts to develop the ordinance that, that y'all have in front of you or were shared. And most recently, the TCMC received support from the executive committee to, to move forward with considering the model ordinance for, for local adoption. And that, the draft ordinance that y'all have seen is developed based off of that, that model ordinance with some slight adjustments for the City of Olympia specifically. While we recognize that moving this forward as a whole region has taken a little bit more time than if we had adopted it independently here in the City of Olympia, the purpose of developing this as a regional initiative is to provide reliable and standardized information to residents about their home's estimated energy use across the region, along with, you know, those recommendations for energy-saving improvements, as I mentioned before. So this was a priority that came up during the stakeholder engagement by folks in the real estate industry especially, to allow for folks who are doing business throughout the county to comply with this, with these requirements more easily. The policy itself, getting into the specifics, would require anyone who's preparing to list a home for sale to obtain a Home Energy Score report for that dwelling unit or units. Note the emphasis there on dwelling units. This would apply to each of the units in a subject building. In other words, each unit in a duplex or a triplex, the seller would be required to include the Home Energy Score in all the listings and to provide a copy of the report to all licensed real estate brokers or firms working on the seller's behalf, all prospective home buyers, as well as licensed brokers or firms while the home is listed for sale. We recognize that new construction, like I mentioned before, is typically more energy-efficient already because of those new, newer energy codes. And because of that, have tried to minimize the barriers for folks that are selling newly-constructed homes by allowing a Home Energy Score to be generated from design specifications as an alternative to an onsite inspection. A single-home score report can also be obtained and replicated for subject buildings constructed within the same land division using identical design specifications with identical features. So think about a new development that has homes that are built all, all the same, you could use the same Home Energy Score report for those identical homes to simplify the process. Exemptions to this policy would include subject buildings on federal land or tribal land and any building undergoing a transfer of real property as defined here. That just captures, transfers, transfer, transfers of property that are not truly a sale, such as between spouses or from parent to child. And of course, sellers would have to provide documentation to, to verify that. Additionally, sellers may be exempt. Oh, if you have a question, go ahead.
Yes. Mayor Protem, wait.
Yeah. Jaren, you're on a roll.
I'm trying, I'm just trying to cruise through. We've got lots of stuff to cover, so.
Oh, you're doing great.
Thanks.
I'm just curious about specifically, why, why exempt federal land?
I think that...
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just asked because...
Yeah, thank you.
You know, we don't own state land. You know, there's other lands that we don't own, so I'm just curious.
We just don't have the jurisdiction to do so.
What about state-owned land?
I'm looking at our city attorney here. Yeah.
Oh, okay. So, so those, so that would be exempt, too? State-owned land, county-owned land, other jurisdictions?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep. I think, I'm going to make a note of that. I think that we've taken the ordinance through the legal team, but I think that some of those specifics around the state and city pieces, state and county land would be maybe helpful to include in the language of the ordinance itself. So thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions while, while we're paused? Yeah, go ahead.
Councilmember Madron.
I'll just note, too, this is for like residential properties, too. So the chances of like, you know, even federally-owned, like residential land is probably pretty, pretty slim, except I guess on, no, not, anyways. So, so, yes, we wouldn't have jurisdiction over state, federal land, but, but it's, there's a low likelihood that any of that would be residential.
Yeah, sure. And I, just to be clear, I'm not necessarily trying to correct something, although, you know, if a correction needs to be made, we should probably do that. I, I just want to know, oh, is this a learning moment for me? But it sounds like it's not. So thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you. We're all learning. It's all right. All right. I'll go ahead and continue then. So additionally, sellers may be exempt, just continuing on the exemptions thread here for a second. Sellers may be exempt if compliance would cause undue hardship, as defined here. For example, if the mortgage on a subject building is subject to a notice of default, so trying to avoid imposing undue financial hardship. The Home Energy Score itself is valid for eight years after the assessment date, provided that no changes to mechanical systems, to building envelope, energy efficiency, or square footage occurs in the home. In other words, no major changes. And for the purposes of this section, an assessment date is the date that this assessment was completed, not when it was published or made available. There is language in the ordinance that outlines what violation would look like, which is essentially failing to comply with the requirements as described. One benefit of having this violation language in the ordinance is that it would support a required field and form in the Northwest Multiple Listing Service, or MLS, for sales in the adopting jurisdictions. And Northwest MLS covers about 90 to 95% of all home listings in Thurston County and would help minimize the enforcement effort that's needed to comply for, for each jurisdiction. And through the regional effort, each jurisdiction will decide whether to attach monetary fines as a part of the violation language. In the case of Olympia, as you'll see in the ordinance, we've adopted to include standard penalties for a violation as provided by code enforcement. And we, we spoke with the, some folks in code enforcement briefly and have gathered that the enforcement effort would likely be minimal, given the MLS requirement, like I mentioned before.
We have a question.
Great.
Thank you. Councilmember Green.
So help me under, so the enforcement effort, you said, would be minimal because of the MLS requirement?
That's correct.
If it were to be enforced, if my math is correct, it would cost me $50 to not do it or $300 to do it? Is that...
So it is the, my understanding of the violations is that it's for each day past compliance, so...
It's a day. Thank you.
Yeah. So if you were quick to respond and, and update it, it would only cost you 50, but if you were to wait to do it, it would get more expensive.
Okay. Thanks. And then I assume there's MLS repercussions on the Realtors if they, if they list without it or skip that field or whatever that is?
Yeah. My understanding that is that by adding the, the violation language in, in the ordinance, that it would be a required field as a part of the listing, so you wouldn't actually be able to completely list and, and complete your listing without that requirement, is my understanding.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Vanderpoel.
Based on that, I'm also very curious about the, the MLS side, how proactive that is, meaning, let's say I own a property and I'm trying to sell it, or home, would that, or buy, or sorry, sell, and I'm trying to list it, will MLS have the instructions on there for our area so that people don't get fined for not knowing?
Yeah. My, my understanding, thank you for the question. My, my understanding is that it would be a required field and the, the, I'll, I'll get into this a little bit more later with working with the national service provider, which connects the, essentially, the, the data platform for the, those required fields, basically interacts with the MLS, but would include all those required pieces, basically would include the requirement for the Home Energy Score report specifically. I don't know the, the technical pieces of how they allow that in the platform, but I think as part of the, the supporting program that we'll get into here in a second would be to make sure that that, that requirement would ensure that it meets the, the requirements for this ordinance. Yeah. For that.
Yeah, I'll just add, each MLS works a little bit differently. And so we don't know yet exactly how, how this would work, so part of this is just, we would need to take some time to figure it out. And that is probably a great idea, to make sure that there's some instructions or language in there to, to help folks figure it out.
Yeah. Recently, I had a member of the public who owned a couple of short-term rentals in the city, and she had the same issue where there were rentals showing up, but not... in the city, and she had the same issue where there were rentals showing up, but not in Airbnb and Verbo, for example, because there were no instructions given to those companies to list, to fill the fields out, right? And so I, I just wanna make sure that we do the program, but people aren't gonna get charged for not knowing. You know what I mean? So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that comment. Good, all right. So I'll pick back up mentioning the subsidy, which I mentioned earlier. The idea with this ordinance is to not create undue financial hardship for anyone to comply. So the subsidy is there to help support, basically, each jurisdiction has the, will independently decide whether or not to subsidize home energy score assessments for each of their jurisdictions for low-income residents, or if the funding is not available to provide subsidies, then to exempt low-income residents from the requirements. So that's what that language is in the ordinance, is outlining that. The effective date for the home energy score policy as written would be May 1st, 2026, which would allow for approximately a year to develop the supporting program that I was mentioning before, and allow for growth of the home energy score assessor capacity of the region, the folks that would actually be doing the home energy score assessments. You may be thinking, a year is a long time to wait. Why not start sooner? Well, there are some important steps to make sure that the supporting policy, the supporting program is fully developed, which we were mentioning before, which is ultimately very important for the success of this policy and achieving its goals. First, the, some of the steps as a part of this supporting program. First, the regional partners who adopt the policy will move forward with executing an inter-local agreement specifically for cost sharing of program development. The next step would be, the next step would be, a major part of that cost sharing would be to identify and select a national service provider to contract with to build out the program itself. As of now, the best candidate that's been identified would be Earth Advantage, who's provided a quote and helped get a sense of what the costs of these things would be. And the national service provider would help to develop the home energy score report template, so what the report would look like, connect the Green Building Registry to the Northwest MLS system, and support training and onboarding for the home energy score assessors. For context, the Green Building Registry is just the data platform that Earth Advantage uses for the home energy score reporting. If a different service provider was selected, then it would be a different data platform, but similar to that system. Other important steps for developing the supporting program are to develop a local protocol for the subsidized assessments, develop a program webpage, and to conduct education and outreach to help folks understand this new requirement. Some frequently asked questions before we take a look at what this, what this policy would mean specifically for Olympia. I'll just go through them fairly quickly. First, why doesn't this proposed ordinance cover other dwelling types? One limitation of the home energy score model is that it can only be run on the building types that have been identified in the policy, including single-family detached dwellings, duplexes, triplexes, et cetera. Which leads to the second question, which is, why doesn't this proposed ordinance include rental properties? And that's because a large number of rental units in Thurston County are stacked multifamily apartments, which can't be scored using the home energy score model. It's a, it's a limitation, just given the orientation of those units. The Department of Energy is working to expand the model's applicability to stack multifamily, and also to manufactured homes, which are also not included, but that's not available yet. The ordinance would likely need to be updated in the future to expand the definition of subject buildings as those other building types become eligible under that model. Another common question is about the cost of home energy assessments, which I mentioned earlier, ranges from $150 to $300 per assessment on average. Second question you see here is, why aren't you requiring energy efficiency improvements? That's because the jurisdictions, Olympia included, do not currently have the funding to subsidize the cost of energy efficiency improvements on a recurring basis. And requiring energy efficiency improvements without providing subsidization for low-income households would impose a financial burden which goes against the spirit, the intent of this policy. Last couple of questions here. Can I use a different efficiency assessment, like an old PSC home audit, to comply? The answer is no. The PSC home audits, first of all, were not home energy score assessments and haven't been done in several years. This ordinance requires home energy score assessments specifically, and the reason for that is to provide prospective home buyers with an apples-to-apples score to compare between homes. If you have different scores at different homes, you can't compare them. And lastly, how would this policy interact with House Bill 1015 concerning energy labeling of residential buildings, which may be on your radar? In short, they're aligned. If that bill passed, it would direct Commerce to develop a statewide format for the home energy assessment report, which we looked at earlier, develop that template by November 30th of this year, which cities would have to adhere to. And cities are able to add additional criteria and information to the report, but it sets kind of a minimum baseline of what's required to be included in that report for, for the home energy score. Essentially, the city and other jurisdictions would have a little bit less control over what's in the home energy score report, but would still have some control.
So how does our ordinance look against this bill?
It would still be creating the same requirement, essentially, for a home to include a home energy score report. They're both using the home energy score model, so there's alignment there. We haven't, the ordinance doesn't outline what would be included in the home energy score report. That's something that would be a part of the supporting program development to basically mock up what the, what that would look like. So depending on what the requirements are, if 1015 did pass, the decisions on what would be included, either all of them would already be included in the state requirements and no additional changes would be needed, or the decision would be to add additional requirements or additional features to the home energy score report beyond what the state has outlined. Great. Well, we're almost done. We're cruising along. So with that, I'll jump into just my last couple of slides here to help inform the decision here in Olympia for considering this home energy score disclosure policy, including a preliminary budget. The table you see here on the screen outlines the preliminary budget for one-time launch costs for the supporting program. Those costs include the system costs for the program itself, including the data system I mentioned previously that would connect with MLS, along with support costs to customize the home energy score report, track, report, and analyze the data for the home energy scores, and also conducting marketing and outreach for the program. And the final cost included here is the onboarding and enrollment of home energy score assessors to complete the assessments. All of these costs together add up to $81,000 for the regional program launch, and assuming an equal cost share across the jurisdictions that would adopt, the total cost to Olympia for program launch would be $20,250. Keep in mind that this $20,250 has already been accounted for in the 2025 budget. If other jurisdictions do not decide to move forward with adoption, the cost to Olympia for program launch would increase up to the total of $81,000 if no other jurisdictions adopt, which would add an additional $60,000 that's not accounted for in the 2025 budget.
Jaren?
Yes, please.
In a second, we have a question. Councilmember Vanderpoel.
So I'm gonna play a little devil's advocate here on that, on that cost. So what happens if, what happens if the House Bill passes? How, how do the costs look in that situation? How's it look if we pay for it, but our, our neighboring jurisdictions haven't done that yet, and then it passes? I'm just, I'm thinking of all the different cost scenarios.
Yeah. Thank you. That's a, that's a great question. I think in terms of the, whether the bill passes or not, it wouldn't necessarily impact the, the cost itself too much, given that it would, like I mentioned before, just set those requirements for what the report would look like. And the report customization would still be a part of that cost, assuming that there are specific things that the city of Olympia would want to include that may not be requirements by the state. Getting it into the format and the branding for, for the city or for the region, whatever it ends up being, would still be there. Yeah, cool. Try mine.
Just one other thing on this particular bill. It doesn't require that the home energy score disclosure, it just sets some standards for how it should be done across different jurisdictions in Washington. So all of the costs related to establishing the program and training and onboarding home energy assessors and all of that kind of outreach about, about it, would, we would still need to go through with that. It just really focuses on creating statewide consistency with how something like this is applied.
I have a follow-up on that. So what happens if a, this goes through, and I noticed there are some other smaller jurisdictions in the county that are not initially part of this. Let's say Yelm, or one of, or like any of the other smaller towns decide to jump in on this after this is done, how will that affect the cost for regional? If they decide they wanna do this in the future?
The, that was, Yelm and other jurisdictions haven't been a part of the regional coordination so far. So I think that if, if there, there would be, have to be a separate agreement. It's unlikely that, at this stage, that it would be included, given that the regional initiative has moved along so far. But theoretically, you know, if, if there was an additional agreement to include those other jurisdictions into the program, it could reduce it, but it depends on the timeline for when the city would want to move forward, because the program launch costs are one-time costs. So once those costs have been, you know, absorbed, then that's not gonna be shared no longer if, if the jurisdictions were to be, were to adopt it later on down the line.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Popcorning now. So Councilmember Green, followed by Councilmember Gilman, followed by Mayor Protemwin.
Follow-up on the, the same line of questions. You are familiar with where these conversations are regionally more so. Do you feel like there's any risk that, let's say Olympia said yes, Tumwater said yes, Lacey and Thurston County said no, or some, whatever combination it was, some, some say yes, some say no? The ones who said yes now carry the weight of these stand-up costs? And then next year, the other jurisdictions get to say, yeah, we changed our minds, we're in, and we have no upfront costs? Is, is that a real risk, a totally made up in my head risk? How do we prevent that?
Yeah. There, there's a risk there. This is moving forward at different speeds. In the different partner jurisdictions, there's different appetites to move this type of work forward, particularly in a kind of regulatory versus a voluntary manner. So I would assume that, that there's some risk there. That being said, there might be mechanisms for cost recovery if some of the other jurisdictions who are originally a part of this partnership decide that they wanna join at a later date after all of the other partners have gone through. I don't wanna offer any recommendations right now for what that might look like, but I expect that there's, there's a way to manage that.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilman.
So I, I may not be picking up, are you all wondering about the $100,000, how like it's divided up? Because to me, is that, is that, or is there some larger amount? Because that's, that, to me, that would be a worthwhile investment to get to the finish line on this regional home assessment, even if nobody else came in initially. And I, we could try to make it more fair in whatever inter-local agreement we have, but I, I think that the, the costs are borne by the property owners, and then the home inspectors pay a fee back to this credentialing organization for each inspection they do. So I don't think we have ongoing expense, other than whatever sort of administration we might do.
Yes, I believe the staff report says that it's, the range is like 9,000 to 24,000 for program management. I have a question about that. But Mayor Protemwin.
Jaren, are you gonna be talking to us about maintenance costs and where this is housed?
Yes, I'll talk, the next, my next slide is about program, program, ongoing costs.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll hold it then.
Great.
All right, thank you. Then I will keep my lips sealed.
All right. We'll, we'll get to that question here real soon. So in addition to the, the program launch costs, this table outlines the ongoing costs for the supporting program. The largest portion of this cost for the region is $20,000, is from the program management costs associated with the, the home and energy score reporting. Again, assuming equal cost sharing across jurisdictions, the costs to Olympia for ongoing program management costs would be $5,000 per year. So those program management costs are some of those IT management pieces, just making sure that the, the system itself is, is ongoing and continuing to connect and, and work properly. Other ongoing costs are either supported through administrative fees or set by each jurisdiction. The preliminary budget for subsidized assessments for Olympia is set at $4,000 per year. This matches the amount allocated for subsidized assessments through a similar program in the city of Portland, and is likely on the high end for a city of our size. The staffing costs for compliance are also set per jurisdiction, but are expected to be negligible if the compliance is implemented through that required field in the Northwest MLS, as I mentioned before. The subsidized assessments wouldn't begin until after the effective date next year, so starting in 2026. So the total ongoing cost to Olympia, again, assuming that equal cost share would be $9,000 per year across the jurisdictions, and the cost would increase if other jurisdictions do not adopt up to $24,000 per year. So I'll pause there in case that you still had those ongoing cost questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Gilman.
Yes.
So I do have, I, I was holding a cost question or caution, and it's prompted again by this slide on the, the website for Earth Advantage. For their Portland-area folks, they're charging a $35 quality assurance fee. And this one says it could be 35 to 50, and also include a contribution to a upgrade technical assistance sort of training. So I just think we should be cautious about throwing out 150 to $300 fee. If 35 to 50 is going back to this organization, you have to have a contractor registration to go out and do it. And I don't have a mechanical contractor right now who'll come out to see me for less than $200 to come in and just like take a look at a control panel. So asking somebody to do an hour and a half, which is what they're estimating on their website of work, I just think we should locally reality-check that with contractors and inspectors who are working, because I, I think that may be on the low end, and it, it would be uncomfortable to be offering for those folks to do work for less than they can go do work as a conversation comes along. So I just, I think you might consider that as we're finalizing this.
That's a great point, Councilmember Gilman, especially as we get into implementing this for those who have 80% AMI or below, and then we're talking about, you know, how are we subsidizing for those folks? And if that's the case, I mean, obviously, you know, it's out of reach even more. So, great point. Councilmember Vanderpoel.
I have a very, I was gonna save this, but I have also kind of an interesting thought about this. Had, you had mentioned earlier that new construction has a waiver if, if it's, if it meets the, under the certain codes, if it, if it has been pre-approved designs or something along that line. I'm, I'm very curious about how that works with some of our pre-approved ADU designs, pre-approved missing middle, like those kind of, those designs, that infill that we need that is actually gonna help us with the climate goals while not, because those are already kind of expensive to build as it is with, with lots of fees on top of it. So I'm, I'm curious about us thinking through that.
Yes, thank you for that question and comment. I think that, as I mentioned before, the new construction, there's a couple of options, and if it's helpful, I can go back to that. But for new construction, you, it could, the home energy score can be developed from design specifications. So would, to the point about contracting costs, you wouldn't need a contractor to come out and then inspect the home. It could be based off of, the home energy score can be based off of the design specifications, so that would definitely be a reduced barrier, would make that process easier. And I know for a lot of the home building and... And I know for a lot of the home building and development, it happens in chunks. So if there are homes that are built that are of the same design specifications, you could use that same home energy score report for those different homes, which would help reduce that, that cost and that added effort and barrier too.
Councilmember Vanderpoel. And we would, and where would we house, I mean, just kind of hypothetically, where would we house that information so that if that design has already been done in the community, that developer builder can actually have, knows where to go, it's available to them? Would we post that on our website, similar to the way we host our pre-approved ADUs and such?
I, I think the, if I understand your question correctly, I think that the idea is that it would be a, a part of one, it would be one developer or one, whoever is selling, whoever's a seller of those particular units would provide those scores for their units that they are selling, not necessarily for, be made available for a, a different seller or a different developer to use, to use those same design scores. So there wouldn't necessarily be like a hub or a resource for them to, to look at those for, for a different development, unless I'm understanding your question incorrectly. Yeah, you can jump in, man.
Yeah, and I think there's probably a difference there between, you know, what a developer or someone else is doing privately independently and the city's pre-approved designs. Took a note about that, and we can certainly look into it. We might be able to have those readily available for folks if, if all of the different elements are consistent.
It, it's really a matter of us meeting those goals, because I think this is a good plan, but I also want to make sure that we're aware of the cost of construction, especially for those smaller projects that we run into. Thank you. Councilmember Gilman.
I don't mean to be engaging you, my friend, but, so the, it's the state energy code that we have limited wiggle room about these, these higher requirements for new construction, and it's, it's fairly prescriptive, and right on the application is a list of which technologies, which appliances are part of your, your submission. So it's part of the permit submission for that individual project, but also part of the calculations are how much window space you have, how much square footage. So it's, it is a specific algorithm for each, each dwelling that's built. So I think the language in this proposal that was allowing to use it was if, if you're building 20 of the exact same house, and then 20 of it flipped, then, yeah, within a subdivision, then you wouldn't have to redo it. But if, if the windows are different, or the, the floor plan is different, it would, it'd be a subtly different. Anyhow, that, that's why I think it's, it's specific to a particular building permit, but it'd be easy to copy and paste when you're building the same house. Yeah.
Great. With that, I'll, actually, that was my last slide, I'll just skip ahead, just in case you all wanted to see the budget again, see everything. But I'll, I'll turn it back over in case there are any last questions or, or comments or feedback for us.
Yes, Councilmember Green, followed by Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, thank you for this, Sharon. Fantastic job, first time in front of the council. You get a gold star. Couple of questions on, so I was really impressed with the focus groups that were put together for this. It seemed like it covered a really good swath of, of industries and folks who, who could be impacted by this. And there were a couple of recurring themes, and I, and I, one, I think you've addressed, but I want to make sure I understand. So at, at every group said, you know, the home buying, home selling process is complex, it's bureaucratic, it's slow, it's stressful, all of these things. Am I understanding correctly that because this would happen before the house is even listed, do you think that will mitigate that issue?
Yes, thank you. You're my audience plant for this. But
But I've got more.
Yes, that's exactly the reason for the decision to include a time of listing instead of that time of sale, based on that, based on that feedback, so that it doesn't slow down the, the process once, you know, someone has identified their home that they want to buy or sell. It's front-loaded at the beginning of the process and can be done before the, before the listing is up.
Awesome. And the other piece of feedback that seemed to come up a lot, and I don't feel like I have a great understanding of it, is, you know, you said the, the vast majority of homes in Olympia were built before now. So I don't, new construction doesn't concern me as much, I think, with the energy codes, based on everything you've said. Is there concern, or have other cities looked at, that have done this, have they looked at, does it devalue older homes, homes that are already less expensive, which, you know, you need those in the market, they're ideal starter homes? Do we run any risk of all of a sudden a new home to a buyer looks like a better deal because its energy score is eight, whereas a wonderful historic home that was built in 1943, its energy score is three? Has anyone looked at that?
Thank you for the question. Not to my knowledge, I haven't seen any report that's, that's looked at any home devaluing based on the score. I think from what I've read, it, the main benefit is that it can help with home buyers being knowledgeable, being able to make an informed purchasing decision, and potentially making, being more likely to make upgrades to that home. I haven't seen anything that's indicated that it's been counter-indicating of, of not buying a home. I think a lot of people, once they have their heart set on something, they're, they're set on it, but it adds to the information that the home buyer has to be able to, to know that, well, okay, I really like this home, it needs some upgrades. Well, now I know exactly how to quantify what those upgrades will be, and what my return on, how long it's going to take me to pay that off. So I think that, that's where, that's where the benefit is. I haven't seen anything specifically that, that indicates that it would devalue it. But that is a, a real concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Great questions. Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, well, first, thanks, Sharon. He also recently presented this to the Land Use Environment Committee, so this is our second bite at the apple here, or I guess our third bite since it came to us, and then staff said, hold on, we might have something that we can do regionally here. And we had a really good conversation in the Land Use Committee about that, you know, because, you know, it was kind of like, wow, this has taken so long to come together because we're working with the other jurisdictions, we maybe could have had it done by now. However, you know, sometimes it's really important, especially with climate work, to act with urgency and to move quickly. And, you know, there's that saying, you know, if you want to go fast, go alone, and if you want to go far, go together. And, you know, sometimes that, that urgency and that moving fast, especially if you know you don't have buy-in from the people you'd like to go with, you know, that's, that's what we do. But with this one in particular, especially hearing from the, the realtors that, hey, we're intrigued by this, we, 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 we can, we can figure this out, but it would be so much better if, if all the jurisdictions did it. And then hitting the pause button and figuring out how to do it together was really, really important in this particular instance. So I want to thank, thank the staff for the work on this, not just for Olympia, but for all the jurisdictions that participated. And then I have a question that I brought up in the Land Use Committee, and I'm going to bring it up again because it hasn't gotten any better. The governor's office is currently tracking instances where the federal government is cutting off access to databases and to tools, and so the home energy score is tied to the Department of Energy. What's the plan B if we lose access to that? And I'm curious, you know, if you've reached out to Portland or other jurisdictions using this to, to ask them if they're concerned about it, and if they're thinking about what a plan B is.
Yeah, thank you for that question. We had, following that discussion, we had a whole, you know, additional conversation around what, what the other models are that are out there to, to do home energy score, home energy assessments. I mentioned this very briefly in my, my presentation, but there are other models out there that are also good, also provide a, a good assessment of a home's energy usage, but are not as standardized, are not as apples-to-apples. So if the home energy score model goes away, and those resources go away, we would, the, the pivot would be to one of those other systems, those other models for, for doing a home energy score assessment, or home energy assessment. I haven't reached out specifically yet. I think that's a good next step for us to do, to hear from Portland and maybe other folks what their contingency is, if they have identified a specific one. Again, just trying to standardize, make things as comparable as possible, but there are other scores out there that, that would be an alternative besides the home energy score.
Excellent, thank you. I appreciate that. I, I appreciate knowing before this comes to the full council, like, you know, what the plan B would be, and is it, is it a quick plug-and-play, or are we going to have to kind of like reset the, the program based on another tool? Just, you know, we don't want the rug pulled out beneath us after we get all the infrastructure in place to make it happen, so. And I'll just offer that, you know, there was a request from Councilmember Gilman on ground truthing those, the cost of the, the home energy assessments. And sitting behind you is Krista Lentz, who's going to be talking to us next, and in the rental housing registry, I know she did a lot of work with home inspectors around how much it would cost to do the inspection we require for rental housing. So you could probably consult with her and, you know, maybe get some connections there to, to reach out to some folks to see, you know, what they might charge for a service like that, so that we can make sure we're getting, you know, the, the exact numbers out to the community and people know what to expect. But that's, that's all I got. Thanks again for your work, I'm very excited about this.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Gilman.
I feel like a Jack Russell terrier all excited tonight, but I'm, I'm really, really glad to be at, at this point. And I just wanted to say, the Department of Energy is already thinking what Councilmember Madron's thinking, and they've, they've added to the Better Building Solution webpage a list of about 14 companies who have integrated the code, the API, to be able to generate these scores should the public, publicly available software go down. So I, I think there's good federal employees working fast to make sure there's options.
That's great to know. Also, I'd be curious about how the state's House bill is considering all of this as well. So maybe we'll look into that. I don't have any questions, just gratitude to the two of you. Sharon, impressive, first time you've set the bar really high for yourself, the next time you come before us, because that was really great. We were asking you tons of questions for your first time, and you did great answering our questions. Thank you. Any other comments? All right, thanks. We look forward to this coming before us, and thank you so much for your work, especially on regionalizing. This is a big effort, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that takes us to our final item on our agenda for this evening, item 2C, which is a briefing on the renter protection measures. And presenting this evening is Krista Lentz, our Senior Housing Program Specialist. Hi, Krista. And Jacinda Stelches is here, too, our Housing Program Manager.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Krista Lentz, Senior Housing Program Specialist with the city. So I'm here to provide just an update on our renter protections work and what's coming on the horizon, as well as receive some direction on potential next steps. So just for some background, as we all know, the city of Olympia has declared public health emergencies for homelessness and affordable housing, and the city is working to address these crises on multiple fronts. Our work is guided by work plans such as the Housing Action Plan, One Community Plan, Assessment of Fair Housing, Thurston County's Homeless Crisis Response Plan. And all of these plans have been through the public process and have received input and engagement along the way before they were adopted. All these plans recognize the importance of housing affordability and stabilizing renting households to prevent homelessness. Olympia's population is over half renters, and over half of those renting households are cost burdened, so they spend over a third of their income on rent, which means they have less housing, they have less income to spend on other basic needs. So if they have an emergency arises, they're less able to pay for that emergency. And so that makes them more vulnerable to eviction, housing instability, and potential homelessness. So council began exploring tenant protections more in earnest in 2018. There is a more detailed and lengthy timeline in your packet, but I just highlighted a few notable benchmarks here from the last few years that set the city on this path. And Olympia has now adopted several tenant protection measures since 2022. Renters and landlords participated in public engagement processes in 2021 and 2022 through one-on-one interviews, surveys, focus groups, and engagement with city staff. So the Land Use and Environment Committee reviewed public input and staff research and has led the development of the city's tenant protections. So I'm just going to briefly recap the policies that have already been adopted by the city, and I can pause for any questions if needed. There's also some information summarized in your packet. So Olympia has addressed costs and fees by limiting the types of fees that can be charged by landlords. This includes a cap on late fees and move-in costs. Our state law requires 60 days' notice of rent increases. In Olympia's code, we require 120 days' notice for rent increases that are over 5% at one time, or that add up to 7% or more over a 12-month period. And Olympia requires 180 days' notice for rent increases of 10% or more. A landlord may not increase rent if they don't respond to repair requests by the tenant to make the unit habitable, or if the unit doesn't pass the inspection required by the city, or if the landlord does not complete the inspection by the due date. Olympia also protects tenants from retaliation if they are asserting their rights under our rental housing code. We also provide tenants the right to install cooling devices in their unit. There are some rules that landlords may set for safety purposes or to prevent damage to the unit. Olympia tenants also are provided an informational document, which was included in your packet, and that is to be provided to tenants when they sign a new lease or they renew their lease, and that just goes over the protections that they have under our code. And then it has contact information and web links for the city website. The city requires rental housing properties to register annually with the city to obtain a business license and to undergo a health and safety inspection once every five years. And staff estimates that at the end of the first year of the registry program, that 80 to 85% of rental units have been registered. When we were planning this program, we anticipated in our first year that maybe we'd have about 25% of units registered. So we are well over that mark. And then inspections are beginning this year in 2025, and inspections will start in the downtown area of Olympia. And I also wanted to note that staff are planning a community forum because of concerns and just some of the hiccups and bugs we've been working out with the rental registry process. So that is actively in the planning stages, and we'll be sharing more details about that. The city also requires relocation assistance if tenants are forced to move from their unit in certain situations. So that can include if the unit is condemned, or if the unit will be demolished, substantially rehabilitated, or the use changes to a non-residential purpose. And for that type of relocation assistance, the tenant has to be qualified as low-income because that is split by the city and the landlord. And then the last type of relocation assistance is if the rent is increased by 7% or more in a 12-month period. And if the tenant decides to move out before that increase takes effect, they can collect relocation assistance from the landlord. So now I'm going to just move on to some of the proposals that will be coming to council this year in quarters two and three. So these policy proposals were reviewed by Land Use at their November meeting, and staff are prepared to bring them forward on this timeline. But we're also requesting direction on whether there's a different timeline that the council would like to see, or if they would prefer to refer some of these proposals back to Land Use, or just to be scheduled directly to council at a future date. Land Use, or just to be scheduled directly to council at a future date. So first policy I'll go over is income-to-rent ratios and tenant screening. So it's a fairly common practice for a lot of landlords to require that tenants earn three times the rent to qualify for the unit. You can see here, there's some policies that have been enacted in other jurisdictions, and these are the ratios that they have implemented. Considering that over half of our Olympia households who rent spend more than one-third of their income on housing costs, it may be very difficult for them to qualify for a new unit if they are forced to move. Some landlords also require that each applicant earns three times the rent. So that even applies sometimes to married couples, or if people are renting with roommates, to make their housing costs more affordable. Staff has drafted an ordinance that addresses rent-to-income ratios. So in our proposed ordinance, landlords couldn't require that tenants earn more than two and a half times the rent and income. And tenants may decide if they use their combined household income to meet that ratio, or if they have a single member of their household who's eligible, then they can be screened based on that person's income source. Per the state law, if a tenant uses a voucher to pay their rent, the landlord should only be looking at the tenant's portion of their rent payment when they're making these determinations. So these measures are intended to ensure that if a renter has to move from their current housing situation, they'll be able to access new housing without paying multiple application fees and being rejected, or being possibly displaced to other areas, or seeking out more tenuous housing arrangements in order to find new housing that they can qualify So next set of policies pertain to manufactured housing. So I just want to prepare kind of a little bit of background about what led us to explore these policies. So, and to note that manufactured homes provide a really important source of affordable housing in our community, particularly for seniors, people with disabilities who are on fixed incomes. So preserving these housing options is an important part of our overall strategy to maintain affordable housing supply. So back in fall of 2023, there was a manufactured home community in Thurston County that went up for sale. The residents were interested in purchasing their park cooperatively, and they approached the Regional Housing Council with an ask for help. And at that time, the Regional Housing Council didn't have funding set aside out of their annual RFP process for these kind of emergent needs. And so that led to a process with staff developing some recommendations, which were later adopted by Regional Housing Council. So basically, there's a new set-aside portion of funds every year that are for emergent needs. So if one of these parks goes up for sale, or if there's some other opportunity that comes up, we're positioned to be able to respond to those needs. So communities would still need to apply for the funding, but at least it gives them an opportunity to apply for those funds if they were able to purchase as a cooperative. Additionally, after our last round of tenant protections passed in April of 2024, we heard from manufactured home residents who are wondering whether these policies applied to them, and whether they were protected under the city's rental housing code. So our rental housing code is set up so it's aligned with the State Residential Landlord-Tenant Act, which covers tenants who rent homes, apartments, and rent the manufactured home. There's a separate landlord-tenant act for people who own their manufactured home and only rent the lot. So that's called the Manufactured Mobile Home Landlord-Tenant Act. And so our rental housing code doesn't apply to those residents. And so the city started a process to just learn a little bit, sorry, a little bit more about the challenges and concerns, and whether our existing tenant protections were meeting the concerns of residents, or whether they needed to be adapted, or whether there were other concerns that we didn't know about. And so we held a community meeting in September of last year just to learn more about housing concerns, to share about some of the work we'd done with tenant protections, and hear about the challenges that they were facing. So we heard a lot of themes around rising lot rents. That was the primary concern, the risk of being displaced due to those rising costs, concerns about lack of transparency and communication with the property owners, and wanting to be more aware of their legal rights and resources. And so staff researched and proposed some policy options to Land Use in November. And then Land Use directed staff to bring those options back to manufactured homeowners to get their buy-in whether or not these met the needs and if they had any feedback. So in February, we held another community meeting with manufactured homeowners where we shared those policy proposals in a survey format to gauge their level of support for the policies. We also hosted attorneys from the Northwest Justice Project and Sound Legal Aid to provide some information about the Manufactured Mobile Home Landlord-Tenant Act, and to answer questions about that, since they had requested that as a need and something they'd like to learn more about. Okay, so I'm going to just go over the policy proposals one at a time. You'll see that a lot of these are similar in nature to what we have under the rental housing code, but they've been adapted a little bit to better fit the circumstances of manufactured home community residents. So current state law requires three months of notice for any rent increases for manufactured homeowners. And lease agreements are typically one year at a time. And so every year, there's an opportunity for that lot rent to increase. The proposed policy would require six months' notice for rent increases of 7% or more. And if that rent is increased by 7% or more, property owners would be required to offer relocation assistance if the tenant decides to move out rather than stay there. So the amount of the relocation assistance aligns with the rental housing code, in that it's 2.5x monthly rent. However, we heard concerns about, oh, do you want, okay.
Councilmember Green.
I was going to let you finish your statement.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. But due to some of the concerns we heard about lot rents being much lower than apartment rents, if somebody had to sell their manufactured home and look for an apartment on the market, we suggested that the relocation assistance be equal to 2.5x the HUD Area Fair Market Rent, which would be more in line with what an apartment would rent for.
So for clarity, when you're talking about relocation, is it for the people or for potentially the home if there's, like, I know some, you know, can be moved, some can't?
That's a great question. Yeah. So it would be, likely it would be for the homeowner. It is extremely expensive and many times impossible to move a manufactured home. If it was possible, that would be an option, you know, for the person to move out. But in most cases, I would say it's going to be the owner looking for a new buyer for the home, and then likely moving out and searching for an apartment or other housing situation.
Krista, I have a question. I'm just curious, how many, how much housing are we talking about for the city?
I think it's around, let me think. That's a great question. I'm trying to add up the number of parks that I can recall offhand. I'd have to get back to you on a more specific number.
Okay.
But I would say in our larger parks, there's around 200 units, and the two biggest parks. And then most of the others, I'd say 50 to 100 units. And I'd say there's, I'd estimate about 10 parks in Olympia.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. But I can get back to you on a more specific number. Due to concerns that we heard about transparency, we're suggesting that we adopt similar language as in the rental housing code for information that's included in rent increase notices, about why the rent is being increased and the exact amount of the increase. Since many residents were not aware of resources or information about their legal rights, staff suggests creating an information document similar to the one that's provided to tenants, where people could be informed at lease signing or renewal of their rights or resources in the community. And then finally, to address concerns about displacement due to redevelopment, staff has suggested revising our zoning code so that existing manufactured home communities may not be redeveloped to a different use. And so far, I've received about 24 responses from residents who either completed the survey, or emailed or called directly to give feedback. And residents have been the most supportive of the zoning protections of the proposals that were included. But generally, they've been supportive of all of the policy proposals included. There was some overarching concern about, you know, 7% is still a big increase for a lot of people. And so there's recognition that, you know, it's better than what they have now, but there's still a lot of concern about even if they had a 7% increase notice per year, that it would be very difficult for them to afford that.
Krista, we have a question from Councilmember Vanderpoel.
Yes.
So I really do appreciate this, and I'm glad there's feedback, positive feedback coming through. So a while ago, I talked to Councilmember Madron about this, but, and I'm not sure the legality of this, if it can be run, gone around. But one of the issues I have found is the threat of being bought out, right? We've talked about that. The Regional Housing Council is setting aside funding to help with that assistance of purchase. The state of New York has recently, or the governor of New York, Kathy Hochul, has recently pushed for an idea to put a 75-day ban on private equity companies from bidding on properties in real estate within the state of New York. The legality of this is, I'm not sure, in Washington State, right? I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know. But I'm very curious about how this, if something like that could be instituted on manufacturing housing, but also apartments. Because part of the problem with a mortgage or an ownership of land is often when a bigger company comes in, they want to pay back their investments rather quickly. And when they do that, it ends up causing prices to spike. This is also a fear from some of the smaller landlords in the city, that tenant protections will drive to bigger companies being essentially the market. And as much as we have disagreements on some of the rules and this and that, I think that that's a, that's a fair concern. And so if you don't have an answer to that right now, I understand, but I'm very, I'd be curious about some sort of ways to make it where home ownership or ownership of the land is more local.
Yeah. I don't know specifically about what the New York state law that you're discussing, but I can look into that further. I do know at the state level, there is a bill proposed this session to limit private equity purchases of single-family homes. But I don't know of anything similar for manufactured home communities or for parks. So I can look into that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
While we're still on the manufactured home part, when the, the community in the West Side that came to us says they were, you know, hoping to imagine tenant opportunity to purchase or things like that, they were also experiencing the, the new owner was buying units as they came for sale and making them rentals. And I'm wondering if you have a sense of how prevalent that is across the manufactured home communities here, and which, which landlord act applies if the property owner owns the mobile homes and rents them to people?
Yeah. So for those, if they are renting the home and the lot, it falls under the Residential Landlord-Tenant Act. So they have to be knowledgeable about both and apply whichever rules apply for either of those. But I'm not sure about, you know, how prevalent it is, kind of the ratio of the mix of owner occupied versus renter occupied in some of those communities. I know that some of them are definitely predominantly owner occupied. And I think the one on the West Side is definitely predominantly owner occupied. But some of the other communities have a greater mix. So, yeah. All right. So I think, unless there are any other questions on the manufactured home policies right now, we can move on to rent-to-own agreements. Okay. So council directed staff to explore an exemption from the rental registry for landlords who are willing to enter into rent-to-own agreements with their tenants. So staff found that there can be some significant risks to tenants who enter into these types of agreements, including being responsible for repairs and maintenance while they still have the same legal protections as a tenant, where they can be evicted like any other kind of tenant. They might end up buying a home that would be, have costly repairs that they don't know about. They may find out that there's a dispute over ownership, or, you know, I've heard of situations where the owner passes and then their child, you know, claims that they have ownership over the property. So if both, if those risks are mitigated, it can provide a mutually beneficial arrangement for both the landlord and the tenant, and help more renting households to gain long-term stability. So in November, staff proposed to Land Use that in order to grant this kind of exemption from the rental registry, that some steps be completed to mitigate those types of concerns. So staff would recommend that a home inspection is completed to make sure that there's no significant concerns about the housing condition and underlying repair issues that need to be made, and appraisal and a title search be completed, and that the city would qualify with a qualified legal services provider who can draft an agreement and is also familiar with some of these concerns that might come up for tenants. So staff has reached out to a legal services provider just to gain insight into potential approaches and estimated costs. And I can also explore alternatives depending on those cost estimates, such as, you know, if we were to reimburse a tenant's attorney's fees up to a certain dollar amount. So for today, staff is seeking guidance on whether to bring a proposed pilot program scope and budget pending those cost estimates for legal services. If a funding source is identified, then I would be able to draft exemption language and potentially, at that point, a contract with a legal services provider. But looking for your direction on next steps and what you'd like to see going forward.
Councilmember Vanderpoel.
So I, I think this is, if, as you said, if this, if some of these barriers can be mitigated, it can be in a way that legal, a pilot can be created. I would very much support that. But I might have asked this before, but it comes up to my mind, and this is, we're talking about mostly like a single-family home going from one, going from a renter to owner. It'd be more complicated if we did it in a apartment building or something where a unit would be in a, would become owned by one person, but then the rest are rented. And there would be, the legality, that would be a little different, I would assume.
Yeah. So what I would envision would be that might be covered more under like a tenant opportunity to purchase, which is also in our proposals. a tenant opportunity to purchase, which is also in our proposals to look into, but I think in this kind of context, it would probably work better with a single-family home. But we can explore different options, kind of depending on the direction that you all provide.
So my other question would be like, for example, if we had the ability to lot split, and there was like an ADU, or there was another, or like a triplex or something. So I think that those are also opportunities that in this situation would be good, especially if you, again, if you have like, you know, a standard-sized lot in the city, but then all of a sudden, on the backside, you develop a fairly large ADU that we would be preapproving with new missing middle updates, you know, a two-story one or something, it's a little larger, if we could split that and then allow that framework, so I would support that. Thank you.
Councilmember Green, followed by Councilmember Madron.
Krista, I'm just wondering if you have any sense of the scope of this, how many of these currently exist, how many, I mean, I imagine they're not registered somewhere?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I don't think they're super common, and I, you know, to be quite honest, it's hard to say how much interest we would have in a pilot program like this. I think that we would need to do some kind of outreach and marketing about what are potential benefits, what are the supports provided to help people consider, you know, whether that's a good fit for them or not. And so some of that information was provided to land use, just in terms of thinking about what are potential benefits to both the property owner who's selling and to the tenant, but I think there would need to be some more work if this program went forward to kind of actually get the word out there and see how many people were interested.
Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everybody where this came from is in, you know, when we voted on the rental housing registry, we heard from some, you know, the smaller landlords that they're not interested in, you know, continuing to own rental homes if there's the standards that we've put in place that they have to comply with, and that it's become, it's too burdensome to be a landlord in this new day and age where we have, you know, all these new rules around it. And so this idea was born out of like, okay, what is something that we could do that could offer a bridge for, you know, you have somebody who's a landlord who's like, ugh, not quite ready to let this go yet, but I really, you know, don't have the capacity to, you know, do the business model that is now required of me, and I have a tenant who would like to stay, but they're not quite ready yet to buy, and so that's kind of where this idea was born out of. So Kelly, Councilmember Green, since you weren't on council before, just wanted you to know that, and just to remind everybody else where this came from in conversation, conversations we've had before. And also with this one, the, you know, the rent-to-income policy that Krista mentioned earlier, the policies around manufactured home communities, and this one right here, the rent-to-own agreements, these are ones that staff are asking us, you know, are we ready to move these forward to council for a vote? And so I'd encourage on all of these items, if there are like big questions that you have, to please ask them tonight, if you have them on your mind tonight, so that way, as staff are proceeding, they have as much direction as possible from us. So just wanted to note that, but this, the study session is the time to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Madron. Nicely done, because, yeah, there's, I see what you're trying to prevent here. Krista, back to you.
Okay, great. All right, and then the next phase, coming a little further down the road, is in May, staff will provide some information about tenant screening policy options to land use. So tenant screening policies can include things like consideration of a tenant's criminal history, credit history, rental history, employment history, and income, among other factors. These screening policies can be overly restrictive and have disparate impacts on BIPOC community members, people born outside the US, and people with disabilities, making it more difficult for them to access housing options. And tenant opportunity purchase, as you previewed earlier, in 2023, the city contracted with a consultant to do a study to research options to advance affordable homeownership. And they did some initial research and brought some policy examples on tenant opportunity to purchase and provided some initial recommendations. And so based on their review of policies enacted in other jurisdictions, we do have a couple of good examples to go off of, and kind of a scope for what size of properties that they recommended might work best. And it is likely that, you know, some financial support or technical assistance or a combination of the two of those things may also be needed in addition to a policy in order to support those kind of cooperative purchases. And I also just wanted to make you all aware that there are definitely some major pieces of legislation that could impact many of these policies. Some of this has changed as of last night from the rent stabilization bill that passed through the House, and so I will be continuing to track those bills to identify, you know, if they are in conflict with any of our local code, so we may need to do some updates in order to align with the state law if it's passed. Additionally, there might be some decisions we want to make regarding enforcement and what things, whether we want to keep both in our code or let the state take the enforcement on it. And so those are some decision points that we might be bringing back to you, just pending the outcome of session. And in particular, with some of the manufactured home community policies, a lot of that is addressed in the rent stabilization bill in terms of capping rent increases and the amount of notice, and so if that bill does not pass, I presume that the policy proposals would be moving forward pending your direction today, but if not, staff might have to rework some of those, just depending on the outcomes of the state legislative session, so.
Councilmember Gilman, I just wanted to check in, if you still had a question.
Well, I do, but I can also wait till you're done, and then I can give you the thumbs up, thumbs down, and then make my comment at the end on the last one of them, how about that?
Yeah, well, I think I'm actually done, so if you want to ask any questions.
All right. So the income to rent ratios, I'm really glad that that's coming back. And I've both had a lot of feedback from landlords being concerned about not being able to request that, and then the reality that you described, that over half of our community of renters, who's more than half of our community totally, are already paying more rent than, and I just had an example of my own family, and then just had a constituent reaching out who couldn't rent their own apartment today. The landlord was, or the property manager was sort of joking and sort of not, but if you knocked at our door today, you wouldn't be eligible for any of our units. And that's, that's the reality that you're describing, so I, and it's not for lack of ability to pay the rent, it's for lack of making this three times the rent for each person who's occupying the unit. So I'm glad about that. The manufactured homes, I'm interested to have the conversation about zoning and what we might do, and I'm also trying to balance that with the possibility of, you know, the city's growing, it's becoming denser, and that's a very not-dense housing pattern, and so I just, I think that would require some more conversation. Maybe that, maybe that goes back to land use rather than straight to council for a vote. And then the rent owns, the one that's intrigued me, because I think there's an opportunity to create it in sort of the affirmative, in the same way that the Northwest Cooperative Development was doing successorship workshops with local businesses who would prefer to have somebody local take over the business and continue it? I think we have, I mean, it may be relatively uncommon, but at least in my world, of people who barely scraped into getting a house, having the owner carry a contract was a relatively common occurrence, and I think it's worth promoting that as a possibility for people to have a trusted tenant become their neighbor and own the property. So I'm, anyhow, I'm glad for all of this work. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, thanks for the question on the zoning code component of it. That's, that's an interesting one, because, you know, we could make whatever decision today, and a future council could change that, right? But whatever would be done with zoning code, we'll have to go through Planning Commission anyway, so it'll be a much bigger conversation. I think we could move all the other pieces of the manufactured housing work forward, knowing that any changes to zoning code would have to go through the Planning Commission, and that is a bigger conversation. And I appreciate your support on the rent-to-own component of it, you know, it did used to be a more common thing, and I think, you know, it's not just in, you know, promoting it, yes, like this is an option available to you, but, you know, staff have done some research on this and have found that a lot of tenants have found themselves in really awful situations where they have, they're investing in a home they think is going to be theirs, and the rug gets pulled out from under, and then that's why we're recommending the pilot program that provides the support for them, so they are going into it clear-headed and with a fair agreement. So I'm glad that you're, that you are supportive of that one.
Councilmember Green.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for that, I mean, this is clearly a heck of a lot of work that has gone into all this, and I think there's a lot that's really exciting in here for me. I do think the one, the only one I'm a little dubious on is the rent-to-own. Not in spirit, I think it's a wonderful idea, I think without a gauge of what's the need, and if even a piece of the conversation came from, we have created an environment where landlords don't want to be landlords here, we've now created our own need to pilot, you know, like, I don't know, there's something real weird in there to me of, we've made you want to sell, and now we're gonna, the odds that a landlord would then be excited to work with a city-funded program to sell their home, I just, you know, I'm not wording that very well, but I think you see where I'm going with that, is that's the only one that I'm, I just, without a real impetus, and, you know, in the way the manufactured home piece came to us from folks living in those communities saying, hey, we've got some real challenges here in terms of renters, it seems like several of these other pieces have come from constituents and real demonstrated need, and this is the only one that feels like there's a big question mark as to the, to the actual requirement. Now, it's not a huge program, and we're talking to pilots, so I don't think we're talking a very big dollar figure, so I don't feel super strongly on it, I did just want to say that that's the only one to me that stands out as a little, a little different from the others.
Yeah, that's exactly right. I was, I'm curious about what the opposition has to say. I just, I honestly don't know. And so I'm interested in hearing that perspective, especially related to the rent-to-own policy. As you pointed out, it is distinct from talking to folks that are more, that are residents of manufactured home communities, right, and asking them directly. So I'm not privy to what the opposition has to say, so I would like to hear more. Doesn't make a determination one way or the other, but it is information that I feel like I need. Mayor Potemwen.
Thank you so much. I really appreciated, well, all of the work, really, but you have something specific in our packets, and it's kind of like the timeline of all of this work. Very, very, very helpful, even for folks with just however long they've been on council or however long this has been a specific focus of them, it is nice to just see it all in context in one place, and so, yeah, so I really appreciate that, you know, so I would love for more of that in these staff reports. Anyway, I am also, something that sticks out to me as like, I don't know about that, is the, that the rent-to-owner tenant opportunity to purchase, and I really appreciate you bringing some of those risks and concerns forward, and so mainly, I mean, I don't feel so strongly about it that I think we shouldn't try the pilot, I just think of, you know, what are those protections against the risk, like making sure everybody has all of the information, and then they can do with it what they want, right? So I, so I think that that's great as an option. I feel like those situations are pretty unique, and so I do wonder about, for the length of the pilot, if those situations don't really come up that much, do we really have a good sample size, but perhaps that's something that we can look at when there's a review date, should we move forward with this pilot? But I just sort of think about that, too, is I hope that we get what we want from the pilot as well. And then I'm curious about another timeline, and maybe you had, you had covered this, and it just sort of slipped past me, but wondering about when we're sort of rolling this out, and I, and I think about that last couple of slides about the different bills going through the House or the state legislature, and I just don't want the rules to, or for property owners, property managers to feel like the rules keep changing, and they're catching up or something is happening to them, right? So I am in favor of waiting and seeing, and I'm glad that you're tracking so closely what that looks like, and as much as the state can get done for us, I'd be so thankful for that, and then we can tie up some things on our end to just make sure that it is in line with what our intentions for are in Olympia, so thanks so much.
Councilmember Vanderpoel, followed by Councilmember Madron.
So I'm generally, I am supportive of the pilot. I think that to help with some of the questions that some of my councilmates have, to see the data collection on that and even get feedback on that to help understand the need. For me, a lot of it, a lot of the reason why I think that rent-to-own is important is a lot of people's rents are, because of the way the housing market is, are as high as some people's mortgages, and it seems logical to me that if we find some landlords that are willing to make those steps, or we find ways to encourage those steps, I mean, the encouragement to me is if they want to sell it and they want to get out, right? But that's also the question of how long, what does this pilot say about how long that that rent-to-own process would be, right? How long they would be, how would the financial part of that run, right? But to me, I think these are, these are ways in order to get people equitably into a system, right, because they may not have the credit, they may not have the history, but they're paying the money right now, that is, if they happen to have owned a time machine and gone back in time about 10 years ago to buy a home, they probably wouldn't have been able to buy a home, right? Now they're stuck, and so these are, to me, are ways to equitably get more people into housing ownership, so I look forward to pilot.
Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I want to follow up on some of the comments on the pilot project, too. You know, for one, it's a voluntary program, there's, you know, if there's opposition to it, it's, it would be opposition to the idea, it's not doing anything to anybody. Somebody would opt into it, and there would have to be both sides, both landlord and tenant mutually agreeing to do it, so there's that component of it. And, you know, the way I see it is there are situations out there where we have folks who are landlords who, you know, maybe it's less desirable to be a landlord because of the rules that we've put in place, but also, you know, we have people who have purchased a home as an investment, and, you know, and we're seeing them as providing a service in our community and that needing to have some sort of regulation around it, and so, you know, they're like, oh, maybe this isn't for me. But maybe part of their retirement plan, their financial plan, was to be a landlord for a little bit longer, and they need, they would like a little bit more time to be able to have that rental income, and they have a tenant who said, man, I'd love to buy the house that I've lived in for five years, but I need a little bit more time to save up for, or do whatever is needed, build the employment history, whatever, so I see this as a bridge program for four unique situations, you know, it is a pilot, and if it helps out a few folks, you know, one of the hardest goals that I think we have to address in our Housing Action Plan is around homeownership. Unless Habitat is building homes, we really do not have a plan to help people with homeownership opportunities, so it is experimental, you know, we don't have people banging on our doors saying, hey, we need this program, but if we offer it and see if people take us up on it, you know, then we'll learn, we'll learn something, you know, if nobody takes us up on it, we're like, okay, well, You know, if nobody takes us up on it, we're like, okay, well, we tried and that didn't work. But maybe we do have people who are like, hey, I'm really intrigued by this. Thanks for the help. This really helped, you know, us in our specific situation. So that's why I'm excited about this. I don't see it as the silver bullet solution for anything. I don't see it as appeasing people who are upset with our, you know, all, all we've done around rental housing. I just see it as creating a little bit more opportunity in one of our hardest-to-achieve goals around housing, which is homeownership.
Thank you. That provides a lot of clarity. Thank you. Councilmember Madron. Councilmember Vanderpool.
Here, here. I, a second thing that I, do you think we do that? You know, there's a saying that I heard not that long ago called, you can't judge the need for a bridge by the people swimming in the water, meaning you don't, we won't know until a pilot goes through what the need is, right? We honestly won't know. And that's what's, that's why I'm hopeful that it, there'll be more clarity for everyone with the program. So, thank you.
I could just quickly add, too, just anecdotally, when we've had some conversations with folks in the community who are thinking about selling for one reason or another, they first explored it with their tenant. You know, if they were considering selling, they had that conversation first with the tenant who was living there. And I do know of at least a couple of situations where the tenant did end up buying the home from the landlord. So just, you know, it's only our small sample from what we're hearing when we just talk to people in the community, but we have at least heard of landlords and tenants who are exploring those options, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? I, I remember when we adopted the first set of tenant protections, we had talked about monitoring the impacts of our rental registry program. And Councilmember Madron, you just mentioned something about, you know, whether we are, I guess, disincentivizing people to be landlords in our community. I'm not sure that's the case. So I would love to know if there is any data that supports that, that theory, you know? So I hope that we're continuing to monitor the impacts of our program and hopefully we can get something before us in the short term that can tell us where we are. And obviously, it's great numbers in terms of getting 80 to 85% of the, of the homes registered. That's great. But what are those impacts to, to our landlords? And that's something that we heard quite a bit about before we adopted the policy that, oh, this is the effect it's going to have, and now I want to know if that's true. Yes, and, and yes, and, and the impacts to tenants as well. Thank you, Mayor Potem. So you need, we need to clarify whether or not we are giving direction to staff to bring this back to council, correct? Okay. Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I'll just reflect back what I've heard. I've, I haven't heard any, you know, I've heard some concerns around, you know, the efficacy of the rent-to-own pilot program, but also I'm seeing head nods around the table that it's worth a try, right? And with other things, other than the zoning component with the manufactured housing, which would have to go through the planning commission anyway. I, I saw a lot of head nods around the table for everything else we discussed tonight, so I'll just offer that as a starting point so someone can, you know, say, wait, hold on a second if I'm wrong.
Any comments? Mayor Potemwin.
No, I think I'm tracking that as well. And then some, I didn't hear anyone but myself say this, so maybe I'm advocating for myself. But the, but also making sure that we're rolling out things with whatever possible new protections or affirmed protections that we already have through the state legislature, that'd be great.
Agreed, yeah. And we should know by late April and then, you know, whenever governor signs bills in. So that's actually going to happen before we know it. I'm sure staff will need at least that much time to do some writing of ordinances and stuff.
Okay. All right. Any dissenting opinions on what we just heard? Speak now. All right. It's getting late. So, yeah, okay. So we are giving you the direction that you need to do your additional research and bring that back to, to council with consideration to all of the policies that you've briefed us on this, this evening. So, any additional questions? All right. Thank you, Krista. Very, very thorough presentation, very thorough staff report. We so appreciate that. It was definitely a lot of information and I'm still processing it, so, and I probably will be for the next couple of days. So if I have any questions, I'll be sure to ask you about them offline.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. With no further business before, oh, before I do that, I want to say goodnight to our city manager, who is probably still on, you know?
He's still here.
Oh, well, thanks for sticking around, Jay. Go, get to bed. It's good to see you. I hope you're enjoying the conference.
I am. Goodnight, all.
Goodnight. So with no further business, before the Olympia City Council were adjourned.